Hi.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to go in the same format as we did last meeting. Well, actually, let me go through roll call real quick. So, present currently right now for the Board of Selectmen, to my left is Selectman Jeff Miller, to his left is Mark Griffin, and I am Join Gilman. Department Heads, Town Administrator Brenda Pearl is to my right. To her right is Police Chief Dana Flanders, Fire Chief Tom Blanchett over there to the left, and Road Agent to the left, Russ Pearl. Mark will start off with his information on the proposed 2026-2027 budget, hitting some highlights more than anything probably. And then we'll move into, Jeff will go over the newly adjusted revenue sheets that everybody should have, and then I will go through finally on some additional warrant articles. I'll cover each one quickly, and then I'm just going to jump into, fully read the final ones that were submitted on February 3rd. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Good plan? Good plan. Okay, so we'll open it up. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. You'll see the difference between the budget at the first meeting and the budget at the second meeting. There's a couple changes that were made in the time between meetings. Employee benefits, the first line for the FICA Medicare town share decreased due to decrease in a salary line. Next page, you'll notice in general government building, we have Safety Building Station Two Heat, which now shows up there. The last budget hearing, we had it in the fire department. So, we pulled that out and put it here in the general government building to better align with buildings and personnel. And, a couple more pages, you'll find the only other change we made, which was in the fire, ambulance, and forest fire departments. Okay, and that should be page six. And we have the line in there for fire prevention officer, and we had that at $57,720, and we reduced that to $50,024. And that was due to a decrease in hours per week that we felt better aligned with the compensation. So, you also notice there, some lines down, that we have the Safety Building Station Two, which had $10,000 and $12,000 from last year. That moved to the general building and is no longer here. And that changes the totals on those couple departments. Other than that, those are the only changes between last meeting and this meeting.
Okay. Why don't we just go through all of them, and then we'll open up the floor for any questions for all, any, any one section or... So, we're going to move on to revenues. Chuck Miller will address revenue. No change.
Okay, so in our proposed estimated revenues, 26-27, you'll notice several lines, again, are, and this is all estimates. So, we estimated the 25-26 estimates of revenue at what you presently see, and we also did our 26-27 estimates of revenue. And again, they're only estimates because some of these lines will go up and some will go down. One of the big ones is the building permits. Okay, what we estimated last year was $70,000. There have been some buildings being done this year, so, but we want to compare 26-27 to what we had estimated for 25-26. So, when it's questioned that we know we've taken in those, that will come up during the end of the year when we send all our information out to DRA. As revenues, these will all be adjusted, so when we send all this paperwork out in the fall, all the corrections will have been made, and DRA would have all of the facts of the revenue that we have done 25-26. All right, because we still have five more months to go. So, to give you a fictitious number isn't the best way to do it, because next year we may not have the amount of buildings that we had this year, so comparatively it just won't, it'll skew the bottom line. So, if we quickly, payment in lieu of taxes, we're estimating a reduction of 22% or $23,000. Yield tax, a reduction of $5,000. Interest and penalties on delinquent taxes, we're only estimating a $600 increase. Business licenses and permits, an increase of $500. Motor vehicles, we're looking at $1 million. And building permits, as I said, is, we've got it figured right now for a reduction of $10,000. Again, it all depends on how many buildings we get in 26-27 and how that revenue will stream in. Other license and permits and fees, a reduction of $4,600. Meals and room tax, increase of $14,566. Highway block grants, we get every year, we're looking at an increase of $6,057. State and federal forest reimbursements, we're looking at $82, increase income from departments, an increase possibly $900 garage, garbage refuse revenues, we've got an estimated possibly a 30% increase at $23,200. Other charges, we're estimating an increase of 15% or $84,950. Sale of municipal properties, up $1,500 or 18%. And interest in investments, we're estimating a 900% by $90,000 in investments. And rents of property, possibility of $1,700, which is an increase of 113%. And then miscellaneous revenues, down possibly 5% or $2,400. With a total of estimated revenue, and again, we like to stay down on the low end, because we will, we know we're going to have more revenues, but again, we don't have the figures until later in the year, obviously. So, it'll be increased by 9% or $279,055 for our estimated revenue of $3,450,339. And generally, even when we do this at the rate that we estimate the revenues at, generally it pays half of what our total tax is for the town. So, if we're estimating 12%, or 12.8% increase over last year, you can look at the percentages here in revenue, and it should offset at least half. Generally, it offsets one half. That's all I've got.
Good. So now, we're going to work over to the 2026 warrant, or they say warrant on top of the page, warrant articles. Page two of six is the first one, kicks the zoning amendments, we're not going to go through those. On the bottom, Article Three is, you guys can anticipate making a decision on a possible town motto for the town. Loudon, a welcoming community with a big smile, is the official town motto. I believe the Girl Scouts have come forward on that, the Girl Scouts will speak on that during the meeting. And then it'll be up to the town if they would like to do that or not. And Article Four on the next page, page three of six, up top, general municipal operation, general municipal operations, $7,431,524. Then Article Five, we'll move off to Article Five, raise and appropriate established CRFs. You can see the list of them there, what the tax impact, if they were all to be approved, it'd be $1.76. Then we get down to six, raise and appropriate for ETFs, where they, they are listed there, and there's a .37 increase there. We get down to Article Seven, the purchase of a used aerial fire truck, just for the town's approval to move forward on purchasing a used truck. I think that was a consensus last year, that a new one wasn't going to work, and possibly a used one would be a better idea, so that's addressing that issue. Modify purpose of a cemetery ETF, that is currently in play, that's, there is one there already, it's just modifying the verbiage in order for us to be able to, or the, or the people in charge of these cemeteries to use existing funds in there to maintenance the cemeteries. Right now, the way it's worded, it can't come from that line, it can't come from that ETF to work for maintenance. Article Nine would be a Colombarian project, where I, it's my understanding that if Article Eight passed, we probably wouldn't need Article Nine, for the sole purpose is enough money in Article Eight to cover whatever we wanted to do in Article Nine, if that makes sense. That would be the goal, to save that. And then Article Ten would be the purchase of dump truck for the highway department, and that's grant induced. Grant is covering most of that, and we just have to expend some money for the R portion of it. Eleven has changed, Article Eleven changed term of supervisor checklist, I think they're going from a five-year to a three-year, correct?
Six.
Six-year?
Six to three.
Six to three, right. Article Twelve, modify veterans disabled tax exemption, moving it from $1,400 to $2,150. And then there's a, there's an Article Thirteen for modify elderly exemptions, that's all listed out, how that would play out, depending on your age, depending on your taxes. And then Article Fourteen is adopt a commercial industry property tax exemption, and we have someone here to speak about that today, so we'll stall there for a second. We're going to invite Ned up, and he can explain Article Fourteen real quick.
Ned Lazott, Loudon Economic Development Committee. Yes, so, from last week, I'll just, you know, quickly review what the RSA is for the town. This tax relief tool is to enable, is enabled in the state of New Hampshire through the RSA 72.81 and 82. The exemption would allow the Board of Selectmen on a case-by-case basis to provide tax relief for a business to build, rebuild, modernize, or expand within the town. The tax relief is granted on new municipal and local school property taxes for up to five years on a sliding scale, from 50% of the increase in assessed value in year one down to 10% of the increase in assessed value in year five. This delay in tax impact is intended to encourage new businesses to come to Loudon, as well as support existing local businesses looking to improve or expand their operations. The property tax exemption would only be available for commercial industrial uses within the commercial industrial zone zoning district along much of Route 106. And since last week, the, there was, and before that, the weekend before, there was an article in the Concord Monitor by Charlotte Mathely, who I think is here, thank you, Charlotte. And because of that, I ended up getting a call from a gentleman by the name of Darren Winham, who is the Economic Development Director for the town of Exeter. And he turns out to be one of the original co-authors of getting this RSA passed in 2017. And since then, there's not been the ability to have something like this in a five-year program, and so we could be the first. And he was saying that, he's a real estate developer too, that he has potentially some investors that would, you know, take advantage of this. So, already it's gaining some interest. And since then, he turned me on to a real estate developer for Colliers, who actually has the property listed on the corner here, right across from the fire department, Dan Scanlon. And, and he sent me a brochure that he's, you know, they're actively interested in this as a really great resource to help move property. So, I think we stand at an opportune time to get this thing for the advantage of our town, and also to help with our tax base. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to clarify, there was some misinformation, and I can only describe it as terrible misinformation, from someone who was present at our first meeting, that, again, went to social media and said that this is a possibility leading to corruption, and that the Board of Selectmen could make our own decisions on who gets what, and that the rest of it would be on the backs of the taxpayer. And I can assure you, that is not the information that is put out, it is not correct information. As I explained, the, as, I'm on the EDC as well, and the fact of the matter is, as spoken before, we have vacant property along Route 106, that we may be, get $12,000 in taxes, maybe, and you're going to take somebody and put a $2 million building up, and then the 50% in the first year is going to probably triple what we would have generally made on revenue, even with giving them a 50%. So, I just want to make that clear, that this is not in any chance going to be on the taxpayer's back. This is an increase to revenue to take the taxes and put them in a downward spiral. The more businesses and clean businesses, we can draw into town and start them off at even a 50% and lower it down, the sixth year, they're going to be paying full boat. But it gives them an opportunity to establish a residence and invest in Loudon, which also, as Ned said, will bring revenue into the town, much greater than the empty lots that we have along Route 106. That's the truth.
That's it. Okay. Then we're going to jump down to Article Fifteen, establish a library maintenance ETF. The library does not have an ETF right now, expendable trust fund, and they are in need of a roof and some other major repairs, so this is just near American, some money put aside each year to be able to accommodate what they have to replace over there. Same thing for Article Sixteen, establish a village complex ETF, the village is, consists of the safety complex and Maxfield Library Community Building, the old town office, and the raise appropriate sum of a certain amount of dollars to place this fund each year. And then, so we kick it off with the new ones we have, we just got, and we got them the other day, just prior to the deadline. Article Seventeen, petition town clerk benefits, and I'll read them in full. To see if the town of Loudon will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to provide the elected town clerk with health and dental insurance benefits to continue in subsequent years unless changed by the vote of the town, and to raise and appropriate such funds as may be necessary, or take any action relative thereto. You probably would have thought it, seen that last year, but it's, the way it was worded is only a one-year thing. This appears to be worded as it would be a multiple-year thing. Article Eighteen, petition combined town clerk and tax collector to see if the town will vote to combine the, combine the elected offices of town clerk and tax collector into single office of town clerk, tax collector pursuant to RSA 41:45-A, to be effective upon the expiration of the current terms of office, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any and all action necessary to implement this vote. And this, these are petitions that have been handed in by others, these are not by the Board of Selectmen, we are not putting these in, it's individual residents doing this. Article Nineteen, petition Oak Hill Road resident taxes, to direct the Board of Selectmen to take those steps necessary and permit, permitted by statute to restore that portion of Loudon School District previously transferred to the city of Concord by agreement and relative statute in 1859, statute 2254. More specifically, to effectively repeal the convenience agreement that applied to three farms along Oak Hill Road that previously crossed municipal boundaries between Loudon and Concord, allowing the children to attend the former district schoolhouse 15-185 Oak Hill Road, Concord, instead of Loudon School. Said three farms have since been divided into 13 residential properties and do not cross municipal boundaries. The subject schoolhouse is no longer in use and is closed in 1903. As a result, the 1859 convenience agreement is no longer applicable, given these changes over time, including the subdivision of the, of the subject farms, the closing of the schoolhouse 15, and the elimination of 1859 transportation incommunities. Approve this warrant article will put an end to the ongoing overlap of taxation of the 13 properties, and return certain tax money is now diverted to Concord back to Loudon. And then Article Twenty is to transact any other business that may legally come before this meeting, given our hands this fifth day of February 2026. And the outs from the board. Any additional things?
No, I think we're good. It was, everything was well laid out.
Department heads, anything from the department heads? Anything else you want to add? Chief, what's up? Now, open up the public, public comment. Anybody want to talk?
Jim Barrett, 16 Clark Avenue. Under other charges, that sounds like something that we're paying out, I would rather have that say other income. And if you could break out the ambulance, because that includes the ambulance billing.
Which one are you talking about?
I'm sorry, on the revenue. Page one. Other charges, that's a big number for people that just have other charges. What does that mean to people? Means nothing. It would be nice if you could say, you know, $500,000 of that was ambulance income. And at least, at least say income, not charges, it makes it sound like it's an expense.
Well, it's listed out under a revenue, so I know what you're saying.
But...
It's the charges to other people coming into us.
Right.
I know what you're saying.
But it, but it doesn't break out the ambulance, and to me, people seeing this, they're like, where's, we don't have any ambulance income. And I get it, it's other, other income, I get it, but to me, income would have been a better choice of words. Thank you.
Brendan, you just said DRA sets those categories, not the town.
They set them.
I mean, can we talk with them and see if they can put in parentheses, ambulance billing?
Sure, sure.
I don't, again, not trying to give you more work, but if we can...
We're going to walk out of here.
It'd just be nice to show...
Oh, absolutely.
...the income from the ambulance side.
Absolutely.
On this sheet. I understand it will be in the, in the town report, but it will also still be estimated at that number.
Correct.
So, it's still going to be a big number, but...
Oh, yeah.
It's a bigger number than normal. Thank you.
Anybody else? Roger?
Sure.
Nothing?
Sure. Sure. While I'm here.
Just for discussion, Roger Maxfield, Courier Road, under RSA 72:81 property tax exemption, it includes local schools. I don't, I don't think schools pay any taxes, right, property taxes? I wonder why it's written this way. It's kind of, seems, seems odd, maybe you can explain. I don't know. It states the tax relief is granted on new municipal and local school property taxes. I don't care. Just seems like it...
Yeah, I know, we didn't do the RSA, I mean, it's a state RSA.
Yeah, okay.
However, they're the ones that wrote it. Maybe it does include. I wish I had an answer for you.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Good eye.
But, yeah, that's definitely an RSA that was passed at the Big House in Concord, so...
Well, I read that as such that they're, I could, I could be mistaken, but are they not increasing the threshold of 7281?
Right.
That the school system was under 7281 already, and they're increasing the threshold to go out to commercial buildings to be able to handle that, that's what that means. You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Because I may not be saying it right, but...
You make sense, thank you.
Because I'm not, right there.
Rick Billidoo, 22 Hall River Road, just curiosity, why we don't, we don't have all the town-owned buildings for electricity under one, under the Board of Selectmen's payment plan, and also heating for all town buildings, police department, fire departments, town office here.
So, my understanding on the heating is, Russ, you use oil, use oil, so there's no heating there. We just converted, but the fire department is now under, is under the government building line for that, and I believe the other ones are there too, correct? Well, the PD and the, and the fire are on the same, same bill.
What about electricity? Shouldn't that be under all town buildings too? Under the Board of Selectmen's line item?
Again, we've, we've been...
I mean, we spent a lot of money on, on putting solar at the fire station, and that hasn't made us any money. So, it looks like, you know, when you go down through the list of expenditures, you know, it's going to be way over on that. You know, if it was under the town Board of Selectmen's payroll, so to speak, budget, then it'd be all town buildings.
Well, we have done a lot of adjustment to move things into certain areas, we can certainly look at that.
Appreciate that.
This is, this is the way it has been, and we have, we've done a lot with the highway department, we've done with the, both actually, the police department and the fire department, just trying to get things combined so it looks better.
I do know that this has been, this has been, you know, a lot of talking around town, putting the solars up on all our buildings, and, you know, it's still costing the taxpayers a lot of money, so if it came, well, and again... Everything came under the Board of Selectmen, it would be a little bit easier to have you guys vouch for it, instead of department heads.
I'll also bring up the fact that we have, there's got to be a line drawn a little bit somewhere, because you could, you could even expand that and go, okay, all cell phones in town going to the Board of Selectmen, because really, this, it's the town of Loudon that owns the cell phone, right? And you could even go into, like you said, electricity or heating, town building repairs could all go under one line, like you're going to, you're going to take a little bit here, and you're going to have this big long line of all this stuff under the town, and I don't know what difference that makes, because it all comes out of the same checkbook at the end of the day, so...
Well, I mean, it's, that's exactly it, I mean, you...
I mean, it's better to read, I guess, that's, it's more identified of where this stuff's coming from, I guess, but that's, where do you draw the line? I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, I'm just asking, because you could go through this whole thing and do this thing.
Well, I know another...
You could chalk it right up.
All the, all the town-owned buildings go under the Board of Selectmen's line, you know, for maintenance and for heat and for electricity.
Right. Well, and again, a lot of it might be bookkeeping as well. I mean, if he gets the bills, he signs off, he's seen the bills, and it's being paid out, he knows what's going on at his stations. Where if we have it all under one, Brendan's going to sign for it all, and it's all going to get paid out, but nobody knows how much money it's costing the fire department, the highway department, the police department.
Well, they do send you a list of, of the locations, so they know exactly what it is, so if somebody questions it, they come in and see, you know, 8 Cooper Street, you know, so on and so forth. So, it is fairly easy for them to do that.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. That's it. There we go.
Sandra Hillsgrove, Pittsville Road, Loudon. I guess I'm a little confused, are we creating new positions with code and, in land, and then I notice fire prevention officer, wasn't the deputy chief the one handling all that?
Yeah, so the, there's, there's going to be a retirement in the ranks, and that's, that's a position that person's retiring from. And we're, our goal is to move forward and put forth a part-time person to handle what he handled as far as code enforcement and land and all that stuff.
And then, part-time in the, who's going to do the fire prevention part?
He'll be part-time in the fire depend, in the fire department, he's part-time.
So, he's retiring from full-time?
Yes.
So, he's going to be limited?
Yes.
In group two retirement, is how many hours a week he can work?
1,352 hours yearly, 26 hours a week.
Yep.
And that was the adjustment that we...
That's the, right.
So, he's...
The pay adjustment, that's what the pay...
So, he's going to do both those positions?
No.
No. So, the new position is going to be in land?
Yeah.
For part-time?
Just doing out, code inspections, part-time, and work out of it.
And when you, when you do create new positions, that isn't usually on a warrant?
No.
No, it isn't? Okay. I've been in the town for so many years, I just can't remember. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, is the board, does the board have anything else? Do, probably not something else.
I'll just make one clarification statement, because there was some information that left the first meeting that wasn't 100% accurate, and Ms. Hillsgrove just spoke to it to some extent, but the deputy chief has extended his intent to retire, and the fire prevention position is a part-time position. The deputy chief's position, which has been a full-time position with benefits and retirement, will be no longer after his retirement, as this budget is laid out. So, there's a, an FTE that will not exist any longer, and it will turn into a PTE, part-time position in this next, in this next budget cycle. Just wanted to make sure, because there was some information, it was a new full-time position with benefits and retirement, and that is not the case, it is a part-time position without benefits and retirement, and the full-time position that currently exists will go away in this budget as presented.
Right. And those funds assisted us in being allowed to basically get a position with code. And those funds assisted us in being allowed to basically get a position with code. So the code enforcement is finally going to be out of the fire department, we're going to have an individual that's going to do this part-time for inspections, compliance, all those things, and they're going to be working out of what we're going to consider is the planning department, if you will, because we have zoning and, and planning in the same, so they're going to work out of that office instead, where it should be.
Did we get that wrong last time, chief?
No, it wasn't us, it was some stuff that left here and went out on the internet.
Internet.
That was, we just read it away. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public input. How does the board want to move forward?
So we present the, the budget with warrants?
Do we have to make a motion for that? Do we have to make a motion for that?
I do believe we do.
Yeah. I'll obtain a motion.
I will make a motion, that we move forward with the 2026 warrant and the 26, 27 proposed budget to town meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Miller, seconded by Selectman Griffin. Any more discussion?
None.
All set? We're going to do a roll call vote. Selectman Griffin?
Yes.
Selectman Miller?
Yes.
Selectman Gilman? Yes. We will present this, what we just gave you, the public, at town meeting. Just confirm the date for that.
Tell me? Tuesday, March 10th and Saturday, March 14th.
Tuesday, March 10th?
From 7:00 to 7:00.
7:00 to 7:00 is voting.
At the fire station.
Fire station, yep.
And then Saturday, 14th at 9:00 a.m. at the elementary school.
I'll obtain a motion, Judge. Unless we have other business.
Well, I think I would just like to say, anyone who's out there and has any questions, please don't go to other people than who you have before you right now. I mean, we know what's in here, we know the reasoning's behind it, there's a lot of fictitious information being pushed out there, and I would just ask that anyone who's watching tonight or present here tonight, if you have any questions, please just give us a call. We'd be more than happy to talk with anybody about any of these things. We may not agree with it, you may not agree with it, but that's why we have our open town meetings the way we do, so that everyone can get together. But misinformation is the worst thing out there right now. Thank you.
That'll add the fact that if you want to know if the department head needs what they're asking for, go talk to the department head, because they're the best people to tell you what they need and what they, what's, what they're struggling with, so. That's all I have.
All good.
Good.
6:33, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Selectman Griffin, seconded by Selectman Miller. Discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Where's Jer?